Councilmember Anna Snebber, can you verify that we have a forum?
We do have a forum.
A forum being held and I now declare this meeting open. And the records show that Councilmember Johnson or John Fowles will not be with us. I'll ask our development director Lonnie Waters if you will please return thanks for us.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather together and do business of the city. Lord, we ask you to bless over home that's represented here. Bless our city and our county. Lord, we'd ask you to bless all of our employees and emergency personnel. All of these favors and blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
And Councilmember, please lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I would like to make a little announcement, please. Appreciate everybody being here. We have a really good sized crowd. What we will do is if you wish to speak in this hearing, then I guarantee you that you will get to speak before we leave tonight. However, with time being of some constraints, then we're going to limit that speech to two, three minutes. And Councilmember Raffield will be timing our three minutes with the stopwatch. So that being said, then I also want to make a public service announcement tonight that in a conversation with Georgia Power today, they said that we should have a Christmas present coming to us because they should have all of their work done before Christmas. And I would call that one of the best presents I could get this year.
It's the best Christmas ever.
So, Kelsey, you have in front of you our agenda and we're going to have a motion at this time and adopt the agenda as presented. And second, please. And most in the second, any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? The motion carries. We don't have anything under old business since this is a work session for us. Under new business, this item A will be a public hearing to request to rezone parcel 030C001 and 03OB0614001 consisting of 50.33 acres from RA to R1 to a planned unit development. This property is located at the intersection of 515 and Philadelphia Road. So for the purposes of this being a public hearing, I'm now going to declare that public hearing open. And when we conclude the public hearing, after that, we will go into a city work session with council to discuss, oh, yeah, the thing that everybody likes to discuss and that's budget. So we will have a huge budget session. After that, all of you are welcome to stay and be a part of that. I need the company. So at this time, I would ask our development manager Lonnie Waters to bring this to us.
Mayor Castle, before we state our recommendation, I just want to verify for the ones that was not here Tuesday night for the P and Z meeting, that this plan has changed. It was for apartments and commercial use and it is now single family homes and townhouses. So the plans have changed because the developers did hear what the community said and they did not want the apartments, so they changed the entire platform of the project. So as staff recommendations, as the report was read Tuesday night, based on the analysis of the application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance, staff recommends that this project be approved with conditions of the request to rezone the property from RA and R1 to planned unit development per the site plan. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions. Should mayor and council approve the rezoning request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and made as requested by the staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet the minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance with the city's judgment.
Thank you. And before I ask our developer to come up, since this is a public hearing, then I want to let you know that the process that we will follow is we're going to invite the developer to come up and speak. He will talk to us at the same time that you will listen to him. When that is done, I will invite council to ask any questions they might have of the developer. When that is done, then I will invite the audience to ask any questions that you might have of the developer. So once those questions are done, then at that point, the developer will sit down and then I will invite anyone here who wants to step forward and speak to council about this project. When all of you have had that say, then I will invite the developer to come back for his three minute presentation. Okay, three minute ending. So at this point, the fellows, if you will, please come forth and present this to council and also to our audience.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. So I'm just going to quickly dive into the plan. It's pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward. I'm not going to go into all the iterations because we've been working on this for a long time with staff and various members of the city. So it's under the, it's 50 acres, we've got 50 acres and the max density is eight used acres. So under the Jasper ordinance, we're allowed up to 400 units. We are proposing 200, so approximately half of that. And it'll be simple for sale and approximately 50/50 between the single family and the town homes. We want to use the townhomes, we want to use the mixture to, one, create different development zones and two, different price points. So these, this is Highway 515, Philadelphia Road. We've got the townhomes oriented up front and the price premium on the townhomes are going to be mid 200s and then the single family is only 300, 300, something like that. So we're having, we do have three streams that cross the property. We've got one on this boundary, we've got a stream coming here and a stream at line zero. So under, you know, all kinds of environmental laws and Georgia laws and RBD rules, you know, obviously we can't touch those, so we're going to respect those. And this is the lowest part of the site, so the detention is going to be there. So we're going to wind up a rather large, open area here that's going to be unaffected. We've got the townhomes oriented. We replaced the commercial. We felt like in working with the church, and we've met with them a number of times, we're going to be using, they have a curb cut here and there's an existing easement that is there for the purpose of getting access to the property. So we're just happening into that. We felt like using, putting residential up here would be a better neighbor for the church than the commercial use of some sort. So, but it does connect through to provide full access and then the church actually has the ability to exit out this way. We have two curb cuts in Philadelphia down from three and they are about 600, just under 600 feet, so two football fields apart. We did pull the curb cut away from the property line. So I did meet with the property owners and I walked the property. We understand their concerns. So we're going to provide necessary buffer. We're definitely going to be doing six to eight football privacy fence all the way along the property line at their request and whatever additional buffers we need. And we also pulled this away because they have a pasture there where they have horses and I'm a horse owner myself, so I'm sensitive to that. I appreciate that. The commercial, this is a commercial zone right here. It's been, we had at one time 26 acres of commercial, which is, you know, that's a lot of uses, it's a lot of trips. So we're down to 12 acres and we feel like this is really appropriate. It's on the corner, we've got a highway here, another artery road here, a signal. And so this is going to be the primary commercial. We get a lot of interest from a lot of users. I know we get asked that. This corner is, there's, we definitely have a tenant interested in that and I don't think I have to say who it is. It's, you know, we've kind of hinted around at that, you know, a certain Atlanta based chicken restaurant. We want to do, we're getting a lot of interest here, a sit down restaurant, something like a Longhorn. We've heard desire for like a Western Sizzling Steakhouse, something like that. There's a lot of interest in that. And a lot of interest in doing a hotel here. I have a relationship with Hilton, I'm actually a preferred architect for Hilton and there's been interest in doing like a Hilton Garden Inn or a Home Two Suites on this property right here. This, this commercial parcel is about five acres and we do have an interest in doing a grocery store there. And the particular grocery store we're talking to is, they're kind of slow to move and they really just want to see this get rezoned before, you know, before they'll talk to us. That's just kind of typical with them. But there's definitely a lot of interest in them going there. It might, there's also a lot of interest in really nice climate controlled storage, you know, nothing in the parking lot, just, you know, no boats or anything like that, medical office, daycare. So this to me is the primary higher trip generators and then this would be kind of like a lower generator. And that's pretty much it. We would like to point out a couple of things. The, just the impact fees along on the residential is about $1.2 million. All the development costs on the site, there's going to be ours to bear, so the city's not going to have any, any cost related to that. The developer is going to be responsible for any road improvements that are going to be required from the traffic study, which we have provided. So that, there's not going to be any direct cost from the development of this to the city. And so that is, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. So for the parts of the plan, it's pretty straightforward. We've had a lot of work with staff and with the community and I think this is pretty simple, efficient plan. We got, you know, the little transition of the townhomes between the commercial and the single family.
Thank you. And before I ask councilmembers if they want to ask questions, I also want to make another statement is that council will not be voting on this tonight. This is a public hearing. We don't vote on public hearings. We will be voting on this Monday night at our normal council meeting. So at this point, council members, if you would.
I think I may do it all over, but it is their meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about the bubble. Can we show them what?
So something that was important to me specifically, turning that around, Mr. Mayor, was there was conversation had about this development, working with the community and changes being made from the first presentation to the second. If you don't mind while you're sharing that with them to highlight the changes that you were discussing with us, now that they can see it.
Yeah, so the previous, you talked about the parts of the previous plan?
Yeah, the changes that you made to get to what you're at, so everyone in attendance understands.
Yeah, so this is where we have the single family homes, the townhomes. This is Highway 515, Philadelphia Road. So we have originally 270 apartment units and just because of the nature of apartments, they're just a lot denser and those buildings were back here. All of this, and that was the only residential on the site, so essentially all of that was commercial. It was 26 acres and because of the density, we needed to provide an extra curb cut. That's, hence we had another curb cut here. So, and so that curb cut's gone away, the apartments have gone away and because of the lower density of the single family homes, it spreads the units out across the property. Plus it's all for sale. It was for rent prior to that. And this, all this commercial has gone, that's going to relieve traffic up here and it's all just single family up through here. And then we've taken the commercial and I think more appropriately sized it and got it onto the corner, the hard corner where it needs to be. That's kind of the major opening of the changes.
Any further questions, council?
How long a period, and we talked about this, how long a period are you looking at for construction through this?
Yeah, so before we even break ground, I mean, it's, that's going to be nine months or something. I mean, we got to go through the engineering process. There's, I mean, that, that's a few months, got to get the permit, it's the permit approval and then the actual construction. So that's six, nine months off. The site work, I mean, these houses and the, and the commercial won't come online, it'll be at least two years. I mean, it's going to be, you're going to be in 2024 before toilets start to flush here.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate, there's the residential and commercial aspect, when you're looking at phasing or constructing, how does that work?
So what will happen, because of the nature of the site, the whole site's going to get developed at the same time and the commercial will be graded out into individual pads, the road network will be put in, but the whole site will be, will be developed at once. So in terms of phasing, the residential work will commence as soon as the grading and all, site work is done. The retail, I have a lot of experience working with retailers and they're just kind of slow. I mean, by the time you go to committee approvals and all of this other stuff, so, I mean, this could be three years before the commercial starts coming online.
Thank you.
There may be some things within our ordinances that dictate the stage of residential versus commercial in our, in our old ordinances there were, so just make sure we check on that.
Thank you. And anyone in the audience, please raise your hand if you have a question to ask and stand up and identify yourself.
I'm Ralph Barker.
Yes, sir.
I'm from Gilmore County, but I'm down here twice a week at least and have a lot of friends. I'm head of the ministerial association and work with them, but what kind of estimated tax revenue will that generate?
The, what we're estimating on the single family is about, just looking at your miller rate and just doing some simple math, it's about $350,000 a year, just, just on the, just on the residential. So on top of that, when you put the property taxes and the sales taxes on the commercial, I mean, it's going to be rather significant.
Thank you. Next, anyone else? Please stand and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Shirley Forson. My question is, has anyone done any studies on the water usage and what that will do to the impact of the infrastructure as far as water and also traffic studies?
So we have done a traffic study. We have engaged a third party traffic engineer that has a long track record to do independent traffic studies. Now that traffic study was done on the prior plan, which had 70 more units and more than twice the commercial. So it was generating more traffic and we have a summary sheet up here that we passed out, the whole thing, like 99 pages. It was, it was favorable and it's mainly favorable because it's on, we're on a highway here with a traffic light. And so there was, they were definitely recommending a lot of D cell, XL D cell lanes on Philadelphia, a lot of road improvements from here to here on Philadelphia, which would be a cost that we would bear. But under the other plan, that was, again, was more dense and higher, generated a lot more trips, it was acceptable under, under that study. So cutting the residential down, cutting the commercial down and not having commercial up here, it's, it's definitely going to be favorable from a traffic study standpoint.
So if you will, may I address the water issue? I want to tell you that as a, as a city government, we would never allow a contractor or developer to come before us with any project that we did not have an adequate supply of water and sewer. It just will not happen. The moment that we get to the point to where we cannot do it anymore, we just won't issue permits. So right now, we have adequate water and we have adequate sewer. You know, we've already gotten an $8 million plant going that will be, allow us to expand our sewer life, almost done. And we're working always to expand our water because, you know, anyone that says Higgins County has enough water doesn't study exactly how our, well, we don't have a river, we have, we have a creek. So that means that we need to have other water resources and we hunt for those all the time. But right this moment, we are good on capacity as far as water and as far as water system. So I hope that answers your question. And anyone else with a question there? You choose first.
Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Jerry Daniels, and I may have missed this and I apologize, but can you share with us the square footage of the townhomes and the single family homes? And my second question is, is, and I'm assuming, it's safe to assume that moving forward, there will be extensive environmental impact, there will be like utility resource impact. What impact does this have on schools, public safety, hospital, you name it, you know, because you build it, it will come. So what are the impacts? I'm talking long range.
Yeah, with regards to the square footage, the, the townhomes are going to be 16, 1700 square feet probably, and then the homes will be below 2000s, like 2000, 2200 approximately, yeah. With regards to the long range impacts on the school, I might have to defer to the, to the mayor.
We could defer that to the school system and allow you to go talk to them personally. Okay, anyone else with a question? Yes?
Do you have an agreement with Cherokee County on the water and how long does that agreement stand?
Cherokee County will sell you water anytime you want to go bring them a check.
So they have that much capacity?
They have a ton of water. You know, we just don't want to buy there because they're so expensive.
We also buy from Gordon County and from Gilmore County.
Yes.
And we're also in communication with our school system and they've indicated that we have capacity to grow our schools up to 25%.
Right.
Now that would, that would be, there would be staffing issues with them, but from the facility standpoint, that is what Mr. Young, our superintendent, has told us.
But we want, that's secondhand, so we want you to go adopt the in first one. Okay, anyone else? Yes?
I know we're talking about water here and...
And please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Brett Barfield. I would stand up, but I have a pretty serious back problem.
Very good.
There's a lot of people in this room that have had some questions about the water pressure situation. I happen to live less than a half mile from where all this is going in. And while we may have a great capacity for water, we certainly do not have a pressure. Standing water in my front yard is less than 25 PSI. So adding a substantial amount of plumbing and pressure and commercial and sprinkler systems, which I happen to know a great deal about, I'm a little reluctant to believe that we have a certain amount of capacity in this water pressure system.
So what's your question?
My question is, is that if we don't have any adequate water pressure or an increase on what we have now, who's going to be responsible for increasing it or supplying that water? How do we get that water pressure back? Because I can promise you, when you stand in the shower and it's 20 to 25 PSI and mama turns on the dishwasher or laundry or the sink, somebody flushes a toilet, you might as well be standing under somebody wringing out a rag. So while this is all well and good for the community, for those of us who are going to be in direct proximity to this, how do you guys plan to remedy this problem?
Yeah, yes. I mean, I put...
I will advise that you place a truffle call to our city in the morning and then I will personally follow up to make sure that we check out your water pressure.
Well, I've, uh...
And what's your name?
My name is Brett Barfield.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the last.
My name is Brett Barfield.
Barfield?
Yes, sir, and I have had multiple people come and check my water pressure. I have also bought the pressure gauges myself and I have went over and checked my elderly neighbor's water pressure just to ensure I wasn't having a problem in my own home. She has the same problem.
We'll address that for you, sir.
Wonderful.
And anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. He said, I live right down the road, I'm the same boat as him, 25 PSI. I've had several calls, he told me it's normal. I had, I had a pump blow out and we had the, the bridge, I had, I was without water for four weeks when that bridge went down. They had varying, different excuses. They tried to blame it on my house and 25 PSI is really all I'm going to get out of here? Like, yeah, it's, that's normal. I was like, I don't think so. If I did have a booster pump, like you said, it'd be like sprinkling some drops. So it is a problem. It's not just him.
What's his name? What's your name, sir?
Jeremy Sarat.
Jeremy Sarat. Okay. And as to that particular problem, you are correct because what we wound up having to do was patch across there when, when that entire, it took out our total water supply. But all of that will be remedied and we have a contractor signed to address that situation.
And just, just so you know, sir, the water tower that sits on the corner of Hobson Road in Philadelphia, if I throw a rock hard enough, I can hit it. So I'm right there by it. There was no bridge that caused any of our problems. So I know this is, you know, probably really good for the community. We definitely need more people here because anytime you ride past somewhere, there's now hiring, can't get people. The tire place over here behind Bojangles had to close because they can't get help. I get we need people, but we got to have infrastructure.
All right, anyone else? Yes?
Can't map, I'm with King and King's Church. Any, any condition we made for a A cell, D cell in on the, on the other end of the property there?
Yeah, that's, that's in the traffic report also, that improvements on that, yes.
Thank you.
And we're, the way, the way that your current drive is configured, you know, that's all going to have to get revisited, but we'll, you know, that, that is addressed in the traffic study.
Anyone else would like to come forward and say something?
Is this questions or is this just opinions?
We're done with questions. Anyone else like to come forward now? Thank you, Mr. Fellows.
Yeah, I guess all it fits, not questions. My name is Linda Ross and I travel all across the county. That particular intersection is a really dangerous intersection. I don't know when they did the traffic study, but from what I understand from the counters that people saw in that area, you did it the week, probably the week of Labor Day, so probably not a whole lot of people were home, they might have been traveling. I don't understand the acceleration, deceleration lanes because that is a 35 mile an hour road. People don't always go 35 miles an hour on that road and that's dangerous.
You're good. Yeah, when you said your name, I must have called, you're good.
Okay. There are about 1,300 families from Lumber Company Road, using Lumber Company Road and using Philadelphia Road, mostly Hobson, I'm not counting all of Philadelphia Road, just in that area. So they're traveling past that intersection every day for school, work, fun times, anything. There is a very short line of sight in all of those four corners. It's going to be a super dangerous intersection. So I know there are buses going into that area, there are schoolchildren, there are children that are just learning how to drive, you've got senior citizens up there and we're going to have a problem, the same as we have at racetrack. And they're actually at racetrack, they have a better line of sight. The way that the topography is, you can't see people coming south unless it's nighttime and maybe you'll see their lights. I just don't understand how this is going to be safe. In the long run, I think it's just going to be very dangerous. As far as restaurants, commercial, we have had grocery stores before, we had two, they left. We had Kentucky Fried Chicken, we had Arby's. Kentucky Fried Chicken left in 24 hours, like we had the plague, I'm not sure what's going on. We've got pads for restaurants, whatever up in front of Walmart that aren't being used next to Culvers. There are places that we can actually put places, restaurants right now. I'm just really concerned because you've already approved 270 townhomes on the other side of Philadelphia Road. You've got eight acres that is zoned R3 high density right next to Microtel. You're putting all of this in that small area which, next to Microtel is 35 miles an hour, on the other side of Philadelphia is 45 miles an hour, but that intersection is going to get so packed, somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's family members are going to get hurt. I really suggest you, I don't recommend this, I think it's really dangerous.
Thank you for your opinion. Anyone else like to come forward, please?
My name's Jeremy Sarat. I live on, when not late, Lumber Company, so this all directly affects me as does the other 270 townhome that's getting built. So I think a lot of this is getting incorrectly framed as people like...
So, I think a lot of this is getting incorrectly framed as people like don't want growth in Jasper and they, you know, they, they wanted to stay small. I wanted it to stay small, I love it small, but the problem that we're having with this, that I'm having with this, that most, everybody I know in this town has with this, is not the commercial stuff. Like, people want restaurants, like, they try to, like, at the last meeting, people were talking about, "We need Chick-fil-A's, we need steak houses and stuff." I'm just not sure what that has to do with this, 'cause the problem is the housing that's attached to it. If you wanna put a Chick-fil-A on that corner and a Logan Steakhouse, you're not gonna have the same amount of public outcry. People want that. It's the two-hundred-and-seventy people that are gonna be on one side of that road and now the two-hundred people that are on the other side of the road. So I see the changes that are made to this plan, but the problem is still the same. The problem is you're adding a small town on a tiny little section of this road on both sides of it. That's a lot of people you're adding there. So, two-hundred-and-seventy, you know, if there's two to three people per home on that one side, and then the other side, it's just, it's, it seems like a lot. And they're, despite what you're saying about the water, there's problems with the water. And they, they keep trying to say that, you know, all this stuff's not going in right now, it's gonna take a while to build, but so are all the other communities that are going up. And when you drive into this town, that's all you're seeing. You know, so I thought the original plan from the zoning maps is to have commercial all in up and down five fifteen, but it just seems like these things are popping up everywhere. And it's ugly, to be honest with you. Nobody likes it except for the people that are buying it from out of town, because three-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it's not for people here. People here can't afford that. I couldn't afford my house right now if it were to sell. I bought it for two-twenty, that's worth over three-hundred without the stuff I've done to it. So, I would be priced out of my own house at this point. So, the people that will be buying these homes are not gonna be from here. It's gonna be extra traffic, and it's gonna be people from Atlanta, and Canton, and people that already live like that, and that is what this city's gonna be turned into. And you guys are ultimately responsible for what this city looks like. So if we keep approving these things, we're gonna have Canton. And I'm not sure why people are so eager to have this place turn into something like that, a traffic, you know, nightmare. Growth is gonna happen, it's, it's inevitable, but this type of growth all over the city, I don't know how many, there's like seven of them that are popping up, and, uh, it's just, it's, it's, there's, it's...
Thirty seconds.
Obvious it's gonna be, anybody's vaguely paying attention, this is gonna be a problem. So, I just think the speed and the, the rate of which these are coming up needs to slow down, and that's why we're tearing tears. So obviously, y'all know that there is a concern, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm sorry?
Jerry, and then Emily, and then back.
Again, my name's Jerry, and I really appreciate this opportunity, Jerry Daniels, I appreciate this opportunity. I would just, uh, as, as, as someone who's lived from the east coast to the west coast, and I've lived in a lot of neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are fifteen, twenty, thirty years old, I've lived in Tidewater, Virginia, I've lived in Memphis, Tennessee, I've lived in Jacksonville, Florida, all those...
You did.
And, you know, and, and to, to see these type of neighborhoods that are like a, almost like a combination between single houses and, and with, with townhomes, I don't, I'm not asking to agree with you, I'll just tell you that in my experience, they don't do well after about fifteen or twenty years. They don't do well. They become the bad side of town. And whatever the quality of the home is, is it, if it's just a spec house, they all look alike, and there's no really mandate, there's no pride, there's no, there's no motivation to really keep that house or that home, that asset, to as high as property value, they all go down. And then they become a burden. I don't know if I'll be here fifteen or twenty years, but I just speak to y'all and say, I, I ask that you proceed with caution, and do a great deal of thought as to what will this be in fifteen to twenty years? What will it be? A lot of closed stores, houses that are now no, they're all owned, but are now, are they all rental property? And now is nobody keeping them up? And now is the police being called more often, is EMS being called more often? And then the values of my house, which is four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty feet away from it, does the value of my property go down? That's all I gotta say. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Moss, and I'm the daughter of the original property owner, he's now deceased, my mama. And, um, number one, to address the, I love Pickens County, I grew up here, I have a lot of friends and relatives, all my family practically still live here. I, I live currently in Cherokee County, and I know that that, um, regarding the homes that generating are, are going down is not necessarily true, it depends on how it's devised. And this seems to me to be an excellent plan. We've worked with a developer and he's, um, has a lot of integrity, I believe. But, um, you know, there's a lot of positive, I mean, in Cherokee County, they've got developments like this, and they are appreciating, not depreciating, even though they've been there a number of years. And so I disagree that they always go down, because I believe they can actually go up in value. Um, also, projections of a hotel being placed there could bring in a lot of extra excise tax to the city, which would help with the infrastructure and concerns there. I also think that restaurants placed there, they get a three percent, I believe it is, excise tax on any alcohol sales or anything like that. Hotels generate up to, in Georgia, eight percent, I know you in Pickens County have six percent, 'cause I have researched it. But you have the ability to even go up to eight percent, which would be generated off, um, the accommodations furnished for hotels, hotels or anything of that nature. So that's a positive. Uh, I know that the developers spend a lot of time doing extensive research themselves and planning, and that they have tried to revise the plans to meet, we've heard what the people have had to say, and we've revised it, trying to meet those conditions of what people really want here. We've listened to the community, taken all the concerns into place, uh, and, and I just think that as far as the criteria for rezoning, as far as I know personally, all those criteria have been met. And so I just really would appreciate y'all considering, allowing this to...
Thirty seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm Andrea Mann, and I thank you, Mayor, and council members for hearing me, um, my family, and has owned this property for six acres, six point nine, and another couple, they've all passed away, and now it's in the estate hands of me and my brother and three other people I've never even met that live in Florida. So, we have had this property, we had six other acres that we sold to the church, and they developed that, and we're hoping to sell it all, but that's all they needed, and we were glad to sell it to them. And now we've had this opportunity to sell it again. Our property is in the corner, Atlas Circle, in five fifteen. When my father bought this property thirty years ago, it was in the county. About fifteen years ago, the city came to us, and asked us to annex in. Uh, we did, at that time and before, it was owned, actually, I think, with the county's highway business, which is natural on highways, something heavy density or commercial. And then the city has its own low residential. We didn't mind, I mean, we hadn't done anything with it, we didn't know what direction to go with it. So at this time, we were able to do this, I support what they're doing, I understand it, of course. Um, we paid city taxes on it for the fifteen years, county taxes for thirty, and we began to assess as if our property was valued the same as all down the interstate. And the interstate's more natural, as I said, for high-density or commercial use, not for, you know, a farm. But, uh, at this time, I wish you would carefully consider that this, uh, is a good plan, the, uh, to direct towards the residential. I'm sure they're gonna have an HOA, and then people that own the property have more pride of ownership. So, I don't see it going down, as long as it's managed well, and hopefully it'll be an asset to the city, and if I don't just drop through and go somewhere else, I mean, that's my opinion, and I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'm not gonna come up there, but I just wanna say thank you to the city of Jasper. I've been in downtown Jasper lately looking, and it's such a warm, welcome thought. All the buildings are full, the parking places are full, people are enjoying this beautiful town, and it's great to see Jasper alive again, and I think all of y'all have something to do with that. So thank you to the council.
Well, thank you very much. And one in the back, a gentleman in the back that raises, please, stand up, sir.
I'm Steve Forsland. My wife and I moved up here two years ago, um, in Jasper. We live in a forty crossroads, we built a house up here. We spent last thirty years in Cobb County, and we bought three acres and built the house because we wanted to move up to, um, to an area where we have low-density housing and have a, enjoy the lifestyle. And since that time, since in two years we've been here, we've been extremely concerned about the, the, um, the number of high-density homes that are being built, including Wharney Preserve right by our house. And we just have tons and tons of houses getting packed in, really over a short period of time. We've already noticed a significant increase in traffic on five fifteen, and some of the divisions aren't even built yet, and we're already noticing that. These houses are gonna be drawing people in from out of town, they're not gonna be, uh, people that live here aren't gonna be moving these houses. And five fifteen can't handle the traffic we have right now. When we pull out on Wharney Crossroads, you can't turn left on five fifteen right now, it's dangerous. We don't, we don't take five fifteen, we stay away from that. Um, and we're just adding more traffic to it on this, so that's our biggest concern, is the traffic. We don't really have a problem with the commercial side of it, we're just, the high-density housing that's going on, um, is such a high rate, really concerns us.
Thanks, Jerry. Yes, sir?
My name's Jerry Jones, I live off of Matthews Road, and my development has thirty houses waiting to be constructed. We also live in a three-acre zone, so I'm not in a high-density area. We have water pressure problems quite often, and we have water shortages because of construction on Anderson Mountain Road or something like that, where they hit it. I'd like to know how many houses have not been built that were approved to be built? You're talking about a picture now, because of Corona, how many houses are on the books that will affect the whole usage, electricity, schools and everything else that have not been built, and have you taken that into consideration?
So, so first off, you have to understand that there's a county and then a city, and if you're in the county, they have their, they have their own system, and of course, the city as its own.
I apologize, but...
So I, I won't, I won't, I can't speak to what the county will or will not do. For ourselves, we're always trying to upgrade the, uh, uh, system that we have, and, and we spend a considerable amount of time, um, I don't worry about much other than water, but I do worry about water. And we spend a considerable amount of time trying to make sure that we have enough water sources to meet the capacity of every one. That's what we, uh, that's what we work on daily, and, uh, and I appreciate your concern in that area.
Mayor, if I may, um, one question you had, sir, was in reference to what is currently on the books versus what is already built. And, uh, I, I do serve on the development committee here for the city, and so, yes, we do take that into consideration anytime something comes before us, is, um, right now, the developments that have been approved previously, what their allotment is versus what our capacities are, what our utilities are, our public safety. So you're absolutely correct to ask that question, it's a valid point, it's something that should be considered. Um, the other thing that takes into consideration is when you're doing the traffic studies, someone had brought up the question to me is, when you do a traffic study on a development, using this one as an example, does that traffic study take into account this development and the others in the area? And so those are all valid points, but as far as this elected body and these committee members, yes, we do take into account what has already been approved, but not yet built. So, yes.
Thanks.
Yes, sir?
Anyone else?
They can ask questions, please, sir.
Behind you, the lady that ordered Jerry, please.
Oh, my name is Susan O'Shields, and I live on Hidden Creek Road. And, um, I think that the traffic will affect us on Hidden Creek. Right now, from Rooster's Market, that's there on five fifteen, down to the Arby's parking, it's a secured sign, there's four entry points right there, four entry exits. And if the traffic backs up on Philadelphia Road, people living in Hobson Creek, or anybody who knows that area knows, they can slip around and come through that residential area, and it is a tiny road. I just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Jerry?
Yes, sir, yes, and thank you, yes, Steve. Just, just a question, is, is there any anticipation based on this and the other one that's approved? You know, what impact does it have, and I don't know if there's a ratio or is there a formula, but will law enforcement grow? Will we need more police officers? Will we need more fire rescue, fire trucks? Will you need extra staff up front for water bills? Well, I mean, has there been a study to say, you know what, even though this is generating X amount of dollars in tax revenue, is it a zero-sum game? Or is it just kind of a game? Because, will the city, 'cause nothing happens in a vacuum, what's the cause and effect? Will, will it be at the end of the year, they go, "Well, you know, dead gum, man, we, we didn't spend all that money, 'cause we grew." So I'm sure you're asking that. And I'm talking about employment, labor, you know, retirement, insurance.
Call my office, I'll sit down, have an hour conversation with you. I'd love to. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Shirley Forsland, and as my husband said, we've seen a huge increase in traffic just in the two years since we've built our property and lived there, but we've owned it for longer than that. When we first bought the property, there was almost no traffic. We could just zip up five fifteen, get over there in no time at all. And so the traffic concerns are our biggest concern, but second to that are concerns regarding fire and police. Um, at our planning meeting the last, uh, two days ago, it was brought up that we already have issues in the city of Jasper with fire and with police. When you put in this type of density, just like you're putting in at Wharney Preserves and up there across from there, Little Ways on five fifteen, you end up in a situation where if one house catches fire, if the fire engines can't get there quickly enough, that whole thing is going. At a minimum, you're gonna have three houses hurt. We already had a situation where a home burned down because there wasn't water pressure for that home to be able to take care of.
Ma'am, let me, I'll stop you right there and, and tell you that some of the information that you hear is not correct, okay?
I read it in the newspapers, though.
Ma'am, now, I'm sorry, but, but, I'll be more than happy to explain that to you at any given time that you'd like to. You know, but there's no, there's no, uh, there is no situation where that particular house that burned, every single person that got that, the only reason that water line was run to them was because their, their wells were going dry, and they could not get water, so we furnished the water to them. But never, and they knew this too, and we've got documentation that they knew there was no, no fire protection, all we were doing was giving them water.
Okay, so...
So that's all there is.
But the fire trucks couldn't get the water to the house? That's already an issue?
There was no fire protection, and there still is not any.
That's a terrible situation, they don't have fire protection. What are you gonna do here if one of these houses catches fire? Do you have the tankers? Do you have the fire engines? Do you have enough of them?
We do have enough fire protection in the city and police protection. I don't know where you got that information.
So you've done a study on?
But now, we also said that, that particular...
It is covered.
That particular house that burned was not in the city, it was in the county.
Fair enough.
Okay, so, so, lots of things happened.
But you're saying that you have a study, you're saying that you've done a study, and you have enough police and you have enough fire to take care of all these subdivisions that are going in everywhere within the city? That's what you're saying?
No, we're not saying, not such a study.
No, I've never said we're doing the study.
So how do you know that you have enough coverage? Hold on one second, please.
So I'm Sonny Proctor, I'm, I'm the chairman of the building and zoning committee...
Yes, sir.
Along with Kirk Wrightfield.
Yes, sir.
And I'm also the chairman of the water and sewer committee, along with Mr. Faust, who couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
So, um, we inherited things that have been happening to this community, not just in the city, but the county for thirty years. We recognize that we have infrastructure problems, we recognize that we have public safety problems, and we have already begun doing things to correct those things. correct those things. Specifically, as it relates to our future growth, we voted for a SPOLOST in 2020 in the three categories of special tax that we put in place for the planning was public safety, infrastructure, and parks and recreations. So we have money coming in to finance the projects that we will need to do. We're all honorable people, and we don't want to do anything to our community. I've lived here twenty-six years. We don't want to do anything that's going to put anybody in danger. We're sworn otherwise. But that does not mean that we can fix every single problem overnight. We have our own way of prioritizing those problems and how we fix them. Those are held in public meetings, budget meetings, retreats that are held in town to save the city money. All of that information, we discuss in a public forum and seek your input. This is an exciting process for us because it's never been allowed to happen before, and we're not cowering in front of it. We're giving you the opportunity to reach out to us and tell us what your concerns are, and we cannot fix anything if we don't know what's broken.
Correct.
And so the things that were done in the past are not going to be done in the future. That's why we've hired professional people who have municipal experience to help us prioritize these problems. We've done things operational within our city to help accommodate for the expense because none of this can be done without resources. And our city finances are now appropriately divided into general fund, enterprise fund, which is water and sewer, and special projects. And that's why sometimes we may not be able to do something in a general fund, but we can afford to do something else in a special project because those funds can not be or should not be mix and match.
Terrific.
With respect to the south part of the county, of course, we understand. We didn't do that annexation beyond our bubble, but we're living with it.
Yeah.
And we are absolutely on top of it. Our fire and police committee is discussing what our options are, whether that be partnering with our county, whether that be putting a public safety office down close to our boundaries. And all those things are in the works. I promise you they are. And we're divided into committees. We all have our special areas of expertise, and we stay and learn about this stuff.
Okay.
I did stop your time.
Sorry.
You do have time left.
Thank you.
Now that we've had this question.
My final question would be, the traffic study that was done, does it take into effect further down 515? I mean, I know it's looking at this corner, but does it take into effect further down 515?
So we asked for a traffic study to be done that went from... We asked the state to do this from Wharley Crossroads all the way up. And that took a year to get an answer back, and us continuing to ask. But I have the letter in my office that, yes, the Georgia Department of Transportation is going to do that traffic study. Okay, so we can't wait... We're with you on that. We can't wait to see exactly what that's done because we know that we'd like to have some red lights. You know, I mean, there are places that are really... Wharley Crossroads is one. They're dangerous. So we know that, and we've identified that, and we're trying to get that done.
To answer your question...
So is there a way to postpone the project until that study's done?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, the question you had, Mayor, if I may, is valid to what I was speaking to earlier with Mr. Harry in the back, was, does the study that has been completed by the development, does it take into consideration the entire community versus that one zone? And that would be a direct conversation to have with the development or developers themselves. And I have stopped your time again, so you do have a little bit more time.
That's all right. I think that's...
Okay.
I think our issue is just the amount of traffic that was going to be generated. So if this was all commercial, I think it would generate less traffic.
515 is the DOT.
Yeah.
Historically, our city leadership did not have a good relationship with the DOT. We do have a good relationship with our DOT. We just... And we also have to have a... I'm not putting any burden on him that he can deliver, but we have a House of Representatives who's the chairman of the Transportation Committee.
True.
So we do have an ear.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. So that was an extended... Anyone else, please? Come. Yes.
Okay. Missed this podium. Anyway, I'm Janet Mueller, and I'm one of the ones representing the land and all. It was my grandfather's originally. It was my parents', and then it's come to my sister and my spouse since mother passed away in January. And once again, love this place. It's been rubbed in my entire life. We are not wanting to bring any harm at all to it, and we see a lot of need. We see a lot of improvements that can be done. And then we also hear the concerns of people about traffic and things like that. One thing that's different about this over some of the other places being discussed is it is on a red light, and it sits on the highway and the developmental highways with design to be for development. And the housing units and everything, like my sister, in her place, it's an older community, actually, and hers has escalated immensely because they take care of their homes even though they are old. And so just being a little bit older doesn't mean that they're going to depreciate and fall and cave in or anything like that. And I think with this being in a prime part of the community, that it is going to definitely be kept up well because there is too much stuff going around it that's part of who we are that's not going to... You know, it's going to put a little pressure on them to keep that area up. So I don't think it's going to fall apart or anything. Traffic, like I said, that is a concern. I understand. That other... The 270 units that's over on the other side, if I'm not mistaken, I haven't studied it, so I don't want to say something wrong, but I think those are on two-lane highways, and it feeds off into a more residential area for us. This one goes directly out onto Philadelphie and onto the highway. And there's about, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's five points of entrance that you can get on and off of Philadelphie. There's one that goes down by the Appalachian Furniture Store. There's another one out on the other side as well as the... Anyway, there's two... You know, I know at least four, if not five, points of access for Philadelphie Road. And so I guess the biggest thing is, we've paid taxes on this land for at least seventy-five years or more, and then people are coming and they're trying... You know, they're telling us kind of what they should do, what we should do with the land because they don't want it to grow. And we're original people here that we want our town to stay the same, but we also do want growth because growth is going to bring more money to keep the infrastructure up. If we have... If for what this can bring in taxes, we might be able to pay our firemen more. We might be able to pay our... I know that's a big issue, not being able to pay our different people in enforcement and first responders enough money, and this might give them some of that extra boost to be able to do that. And I guess the other point I have is just if...
Ten seconds.
Okay. If all the boxes have been checked, rezoning and everything, and we followed up through the whole process, you know, y'all should definitely consider it. But thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who has not spoken? Got two hands, three hands. Start by you. Your end is at heart.
My name is David Fanner, and I own a powder well drilling down in Canton, Georgia. I've been coming up here drilling water wells for over forty years. I have followed y'all's water system for forty years and have seen how the developments that have been put in, the tax revenue that comes off of those developments. Y'all have always been very honest about taking that money and upgrading the system to where you can serve these different developments, like the Philadelphie Road, the Hobson, and all that. So I've always seen Jasper take care of their people when it comes to the infrastructure. The traffic with this little development, I'm part owner in this little bit of six-point sun acreage, and the traffic is going to come. I don't know if they did a study during Apple Festival up in El J, which it'll stop. It does. And if you look at the tags, there are a lot of Gilmer, Cobb, everywhere else north. But as far as... And I'm on these roads probably four days out of the week from Canton. I live in Canton, and it ain't so bad, by the way. But I come from Canton to El J at least four times a week. And I see so many people on the roads, and I'm going to say fifty percent from out of state. So this little development right here, people deserve houses to live in. I know everybody's got a little shaggle up here. We'd love to keep it that way, but these other people, they deserve to get up here as well. People need a place to live if they want to come up here where it's nice and pretty and honest, well taken care of. And this fella right here is an asset. I don't know... Everybody's put a negative spin on this thing. There's a church sitting right there, and if they put so many hundred peoples in these houses, that's going to be building materials for that church. They're going to start growing. They're going to really, really start growing, pulling people in from that community.
Thirty seconds.
So that's one of the positives that I want to bring up. That has not even been touched on yet, and that is so important. The traffic is going to happen until they do a local car. You can't get away with it. We're down there in Canton, Georgia. All you've got to do now, you've just got to time your trip. It'll take me thirty minutes sometimes to get to the other side of town, but this right here, okay? This right here ain't going to hurt us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Someone in the room over here? You were next.
Jason Engel.
Go Dawgs.
Huh?
Go Dawgs.
We're the Go Dawgs. Anyway, for my three minutes, mister. I'm going to speak on two different aspects here, resident of Hobson. I'm going to tell y'all now, traffic is horrible, okay? Philadelphie Road, the traffic is horrible. Coming off Hobson Road, trying to come on in the mornings, in the evenings, at lunch, it don't matter. This development is going to bring ten times more traffic. I have it seen all the little... How they're going to sneak this in and how it's going to butt up against Hobson and those residents in there. On the other aspect of it, the public safety. I know this gentleman here was talking about public safety, about law enforcement, about the fire department. I am a local firefighter, paramedic. I have ran calls and ran calls and ran calls at Philadelphie and 515. I have ran fatalities, nasty, nasty fatalities, folks. That intersection cannot handle all this traffic. It cannot do it. They put up the little flashing caution light on the north and southbound sides. That was great. I understand y'all don't have anything to do with that. That is... That's DOT, and that's fine. There are no turn arrows coming from either side of Philadelphie. People are constantly running at red light. People are trying to sneak out and trying to get where they go because there is so much traffic. The traffic impact study, like everybody said, I don't know when it was done. It was not up there very long. I do know that for a fact because I noticed them coming in. My wife, my twenty-year-old daughter, have to travel in and out, and I'm scared to death. I really am. Talking about fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, yes, we have an adequate supply, but you're bringing in more residential and you're bringing in commercial.
Thirty seconds.
Which also means you're going to buy more fire trucks. You're going to staff more firefighters, okay? Fire trucks, about $500,000. The gentleman over here said it was going to be $350,000 in tax revenue? Okay, that don't even pay for a fire truck. You're also not going to pay for a ladder truck that you're going to have. It's going to cost a million dollars, minimum of a million dollars, okay? You have to have that because they said...
Sorry?
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Brett Barker again. It's true that whoever moves into these homes are not going to be from here or El J. They're going to come from Atlanta, probably, or Cobb County. And for these homes, they're going to have a pretty hefty income, I would assume, and they're going to spend a lot of that money in here in Jasper, Georgia, that income in addition to the tax revenue. So that's a positive as I see the income and from the tax revenue and from that kind of revenue, the new businesses, people can fill jobs. We could afford some new firefighters or some more policemen if we need them. So all that would come from some of that income that would be generated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Brett Marfield. I'm a former deputy sheriff, former military police officer. I've seen subdivisions like this all over the country. I can tell you unequivocally, and I doubt there are very few people in this room that could question what's just going to happen at this red light. I'm telling every one of you right now, because when you read it in the paper, you'll remember me saying this. You'll remember him saying this. Y'all ain't the ones that got to pull folks out of cars. We are. There ain't enough money in the world to save any one of these kids that's going to get mashed at this red light. It ain't no joke. Water problems aside, me sitting in traffic aside, does not matter. I don't care what that traffic report says. I'm telling you from boots on the ground, it ain't going to be pretty. Now, y'all can approve it if you want to. I recommend you not because I have to pull out of here every day. My wife has to pull out of here every day. I can tell you right now, people don't pay attention coming in from out of states. They come around by Roosters, they see that big green, beautiful water tower and miss it, the whole blasted light, and go right through it. I can't tell you the number of times I've almost been hit with the yield turn getting on the 515. I know it's dangerous. I have extra training on how to drive emergency reaction vehicles. That fellow right there probably does, too. That fellow right there probably does, too. But I bet you nobody else in here does, and none of these kids sitting in these car seats that's going to get popped is going to have a prayer. The original speed limit, the speed of 55 striking a stationary vehicle is enough to kill you no matter what you've got wrapped around you. I don't want it on my conscience. Most of the people in here advocating for this are advocating for money. They're advocating for growth, and they're advocating for the community needs nice things. I'm going to tell you what I want as a father of four. I want a safe place for my kids, and putting this in ain't it. Now, if you want to go home tonight and sleep on it, that's fine, but the first time it pops up in the paper that somebody's kid's got killed at this intersection, y'all can remember me. Have a good night.
Yes, sir. And I think we're going to call it a night. Aaron, you got one?
My name's Dave Garner, and I just want to make the comment that I'm glad I moved in here nineteen years ago before we put up a fence and put up a wall because I thought it was kind of what we're doing. Two things real quick, and I'll try to be under three minutes. I'm not for or against just for the record, all right? But growth is inevitable, as others have said. And so it's one of those things where you can't live an hour away from downtown. And I mean, not even a city limit, but downtown Atlanta. I can be a state cap on a good day and an hour. You can't expect there's not going to be growth. We're going to have growth. But the main thing is, we have to understand as a community, instead of us getting all pissy and red-faced and everything else up here, is that at the end of the day, all these people that go on Facebook and preach liberty and all the stuff that I see from a lot of people, I'm not picking on anybody in the room because there's people that aren't here as well, that sit here and talk about liberty and freedom and all these different things. At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is we're trying to tell the family what they can and cannot do with their own land. And if you believe that, that's fine. Everybody in here has their right to opinion. I have four kids as well, and I appreciate your service. I lost my mother in a car accident. I lost... My dad was hit by a drunk driver and crippled. So I understand the safety concerns. I really do. And I live off of Philadelphie, so I'm at the same intersection as well. And I'm not saying, like I said, we need to have a bunch of apartments that sat in the other and all this stuff pop up either, but, you know, a lot of people never said anything much about the development that's going in across the street, you know? And all of a sudden, at the expense of this family, who sweet this can be, we're sitting here and we're trying to tell them what they can and can't do with their land, even though we preach on our Facebook page that's how much freedom and liberty means to us. We don't want the government telling us what we can do and all this kind of stuff, but yet we're quick to come in here and tell somebody else what they can do with their land. I have a problem with that. And you don't have to agree with it. I'm not telling you got to like it. I'm not telling you got to accept it. I'm not telling you got to welcome it, all right? But I don't believe we should be telling other people what they should do with their But I don't believe we should be telling other people what they should do with their land. Your concerns are correct, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, I get it. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not for or against. But I think we need to understand that we need to come together as a community and we need to get on the other side of all this and say, okay, it's coming whether we want it or not. So what can we do as far as a vision or a plan to figure out how to make it work? And I do want to commend this council because I feel like they have done a good job in starting that transition. It's like Councilman Proctor said, I mean, there were a lot of things, we, we did a great job, folks, of keeping growth out of here for a long time.
Yes, we did.
Okay? But at the end of the day, it's coming whether we, whether we want it or not. And I'm not saying, like I said, we got to like it, but we just got to figure out a way to make it work. Because it's coming whether we want it or not. So I say we rally together as a community and come up with that vision and that plan. If you don't want us to go in, I understand it. I don't want it to be at the, at the expense of family. Because I know if it were my land or your land and I tried to come and tell you what to do with it, you'd probably tell me where to go. You know? So anyway, that, that's all I got to say. I'll leave with this, God bless and go break.
Whoa, okay. I'm David Mueller, we've heard of my wife already, uh, landowner here for thirty-two years. I always want to point out that developmental highway was determined by the DOT. And the reason for developmental highways, one of the number one reasons, is to promote growth and development in rural areas. And when you put a red light on a developmental highway, the anticipation is it will be there to support growth and development. This land has been owned in the Collins family for years, actually the Johnson family before that. All the other parts of that land have been sold off by the family and then we started to see some very positive businesses in those areas. But, uh, in this case, the city came to Howard Marie Collins in the early two thousands and said, please annex into our city. We see this as a place of future development. They're, they're country folks, they didn't necessarily want to sell off their land, but they knew eventually they were going to be, they were in their eighties and nineties at that point. They knew they were going to have to pass up, they were going to be passing away. And so they agreed to this because they knew it would be the best for the city. You don't approach this kind of land and ask people to come in if you didn't have that anticipation. If you look at the tax assessment on this land, this is probably the most, uh, this is probably the most expensive pasture land in Jasper right now. Because the, the, the assessment shows that the city is expecting growth and development in this area. Otherwise, they wouldn't have given us the assessment. We are very blessed that it is under a farm clause, so that we can actually afford to pay the taxes on this right now. If that farm clause goes away, the family's going to have to sell it on the pennies on the dollar or they're going to have to put it up for auction. Because at that point, it would become, uh, because of that assessment, it'd be ridiculous for us to have to try to just own this land and pay and pay and pay and pay and pay. This is an opportunity for an outstanding, a very well fought-out plan. It has, it's mixed use, it's got commercial development as well as residential, quality residential. And so, um, we just asked that you consider that, the fact that the city already here marked this land for development in the, in the past. And this, we're just fulfilling what the city has asked us to review in that area.
Thank you, sir. Three minutes at the end.
Mr. Mayor, can I have one more thing?
Of course.
Mr. Hastings, please.
Just for the benefit of the public, let me explain to you, um, at least how some of my thought processes work. Some people accuse that I don't have any, but, um, so, so in the United States, particularly in our municipality, there's, there's something that's called right by, used by right. So in other words, a piece of property is zoned for a particular use. And we've touched on it a little bit tonight by, uh, talking about the Mueller's being able to do their land the way they want to. They're legally protected by the United States Constitution to be able to do that. There's controversy about it, it's been before the Supreme Court. So this property is a combination of RA and R1. And, um, the lot size for those two categories is a little bit different. But if you calculate the use by right for this piece of property, it's a hundred homes. So in other words, the Mueller's could come to us and say, we're going to put a hundred homes on this piece of property and there's nothing really we can do about it. So you'd have a hundred homes with traffic, there'd be no green space, there'd be no commercial benefit. And, um, there'd be two entrances, uh, at least based on our ordinances. And so, this project, we get three entrances. Now, some of y'all may think that that's worse, but from a safety perspective, that's better, uh, because there's more access to that property. And so just try to think about that, that it's really ninety-nine homes we're talking about. It's different from what you could do. In exchange for those ninety-nine homes, if this were approved, we're getting, yes ma'am, that's correct. We're getting green space, we're getting fourteen acres, twelve or fourteen acres of commercial property. And we hear you, we hear about the safety issues. And we, we have no interest in doing anything that's going to put somebody at risk for any harm. That's our sworn duty. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings, what do you think?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you so much. I'm Johnny Hastings, I'm the president of Integrity Development Group. I want to thank all you guys for your attention tonight. I want to thank for the civil discourse, I think it's well done. And, uh, we, we, uh, we think it's a very beautiful community as well, that's why we're here. Just for the economics, I mean, we can go through impact fees and stuff. But I will tell you that when this project is set and done, it will have over a hundred million dollars in this deal. A hundred million dollars. I will tell you that if we put a hundred million dollars in, we are not going to let that go downhill. Common sense takes that. Secondly, um, you're the folks that live right along here, guys. They are the ones who are mostly impacted by this site. Do you not agree? Because they live right next to it. Now the folks who live in the county and stuff, we're sensitive to their feelings, but we're super sensitive to the people that live right next to us for obvious reasons, because we impact their property values. Now the person here, the church, folks here, here and here, are here tonight to say they don't want it. In our business, that means a four, because they just want to get out of the lot. But, uh, I, I think that shows a lot that, and we reached out to these folks, of course, to tell them what we're going to do if we're sensitive to their feelings. They're highly impacted by this project. Traffic, aesthetically, you name it. And they're okay with this. In fact, the churches, they came Tuesday night to tell themselves. And all their membership, they get their membership together to decide on these things. But having said that, you know, I get a kick out of it, folks, you know? Sometimes I, I'll go to the movies with my wife and kids and I'll just go into one of the movies and just see the end of the movie. Because we're a heck of a while waiting for the, the trailers to go through. And usually the end of the, the end of the movie is very nice and people are kissing, making up after all the commotion that goes through it. And, you know, this story here, this movie goes back seventy-five years to the Collins family buying this property. Seventy-five years ago. And for seventy-five years, they have paid that property tax. Nobody paid it for them. And I suspect back then, it might have been a little bit of scramble to make that money, did that pay off? And they've never missed a payment and were never late. About twenty years ago.
Thirty seconds.
Twenty years ago, the city of Jasper comes to this family and says, would you please annex this in? This is something we want to have for development. Now the parents are past, they handed it to these two daughters and now they want to develop it. That's the beginning that will be to the end. Thank you for listening.
Now ladies and gentlemen, you have seen democracy in action in our town. And we greatly appreciate all of you showing up for this. We appreciate every input from everyone.
Before you end the meeting, if I may.
I'm pleased.
Could I just get a show of hands here, who is a county resident and not a city resident? Awesome.
Thank you.
The reason I say that, and, and Mayor, I'm just going to expand upon this, I know a few of you personally. And it's wonderful to see a community recognize the importance of everyone's input. This may be a city council public hearing, but our public is not just city residents. Just because you live in the county does not mean you do not have a voice. I want everyone to understand that this elected body is interested in our entire community. Mr. Jason spoke earlier about his daughters and his wife, um, Dave, your family. There's a lot of you here that have true concerns. What I, what I like to see is exactly what occurred. And, and Mr. Barfield, I, I will say, you are passionate and I appreciate that. But I do not want there to ever be the idea that it is y'all versus us. We are part of this community. And so when someone comes in and gives opinion and input, we take that to heart. To me, it matters. You know, whether it's a water concern or a public safety concern, I serve on the Public Safety Committee. We are looking at options, there are issues with our services, we are aware of that. But the community has to recognize, this elected body has not been in place very long. This mayor, me specifically, Dr. Proctor and the others on the other end, are doing what's best for the city as best we can, as quick as we can. You hate to hear the word inherited. We did inherit infrastructure that was aging, but that's no different than any other administration. We did inherit public safety that was not up to date. We are trying to fix that. So just bear with us, but thank you for coming out, whether you're a city resident or a county resident, to recognize that your opinion matters. And more importantly, the, the families and the owners that are sitting here tonight for this development and those that are on the other side, realize that you're at a point now where you can break bread together. You can have those personal conversations, have that relationship. It's really hard when you shake someone's hand or have a meal with them to be hateful. And so I encourage you, as you have those private one-on-one conversations, build the relationship and the trust and be honest with each other. Because again, it's not y'all versus us, it's not you versus them. This is our community. So, thank you.
And now declare this public hearing, and we have had a very good public hearing. But you could stay for the budget part. For budget, and, uh, I will be amendment of fiscal year 2021 budget, and this will be very well handled.
Okay, I had sent y'all out, uh, something earlier in the week that has been drastically changed, as I knew it would, but... Anyway, if you remember back in July when we did the budget amendment for general fund, after we adjusted the pay scale, our, um, use of fund balance was about two hundred seventy thousand. That was a couple of months ago and a lot of things have changed. So I went in and looked, and Lindsay looked behind me, um, looked at the revenues for the rest of the year. And there was quite a change. If you, um, flip over to the general fund revenues, which is after these first four pages.
You're on the budget, not the amendment?
Amendment, I'm on the amendment. Twenty twenty-one amended. Some pretty significant changes were made, um, I was supposed to have notes, but to do with development. If you look at, um, well, the insurance premium tax came in a little more than we budgeted. The, um, what is it? Can I see? The building permits, we had budgeted at sixty-five thousand, uh, up that to two hundred thousand and that's probably conservative. Try to be conservative, I certainly don't want to over-budget revenue, I want to under-budget revenue and have a nice profit at the end of the year. Lost, uh, I bumped that up to one point seven because it's really trending up. And so is our squashed receipts. So squashed and lost are both up, so that's a conservative estimate on what I think we're going to end the year. But those, those two things were probably the, the big game changer in the general fund when it comes down to us staying above the water at the end of the year. You could, you could go through and look at the, um, individual departments and see where the changes were. We've had some staff changes sadly in the executive, but, um, that, that process is going to help us out this year, but next year it'll be our full year. Um, if, if y'all have the opportunity to look over this tomorrow or over the weekend and you see something that looks questionable to you, this is a, this is a work in progress. And, uh, I would appreciate somebody questioning things because, you know, I may have got some wrong. I, I try not to, but I may have. Noting the Parks Administration, um, Adam had two people that were working on parks that were not being charged there. So in twenty twenty-two, those people, two people, half of their time is going to be charged there, so they should be, be jumped.
Where is that located?
That, I tried to put little things in the notes, in the far right column. But Parks is, is, is on back at sixty-two hundred, or sixty-two thousand in the general fund. And right now, I'm just looking at the amended.
Yep.
And, okay, um, technology fund, we had a couple of big items there for the, a new phone system for the Woods apartment in municipal court. And it turns out that it's, it's part of, they're, all their new phones are part of the monthly plans. So that was, uh, I think it was twenty-five thousand. And then Matt, I, I took his off because he said that it wasn't going to happen this year, the, the heaters and radios. So all that does is just preserve fund balance for, um, twenty twenty-two, for when it comes time to do that.
Could squashed be used for that?
It could, but we have a pretty healthy fund balance in two oh one. And that's what the purpose of that fund was to pay for things like that.
You said that's fund two oh one?
Two oh one.
Is that where it showed, uh, computers are showing you on there?
Um, gosh, this is so little. Yeah, initially, the, uh, adopted budget had, yeah, the, the twenty twenty-one adopted was total ninety thousand and we're only going to spend less than ten thousand this year. And we didn't put it in the twenty twenty-two budget request because I don't have enough information. Um, we have confiscated assets, um, that's a work in progress. We've, um, they retrieved confiscation of thirty-four hundred dollars this year. So, um, Matt's working with me to get that fund properly represented. Then there's the American Rescue Plan. We don't have a budgeted use of those monies this year because we simply don't have the final rule from the Treasury yet, um, that we expect to get the same amount next year. And I do have, when we start looking at the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two request, I do have a use of some of that money next year.
Okay, I'm going to ask this silly question. Other municipalities or government entities have set forth what they plan to do with theirs? Is that just off of a guess? And we're just being more conservative?
Well, we have to, I have to fill out a, um, report by April, end of April to turn in with our plan on how we use it.
We know, we know a couple of things that reject the can. One of them is water.
Yeah.
Okay, so we know.
So we're just being more strategic?
We're just waiting until they tell us. You know, because they have not absolutely said, I mean, even the counties that way, they're not sure.
The, the rules have been real slow coming out.
So until then, we know we can stick it more.
Of course, we have the squashed money, uh, the three twenty-two, I upped that to, uh, an estimated nine hundred forty.
When you get to three twenty-two, please tell us what that is for those of us that are not.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lindsay and I talk in fun numbers.
I am not Lindsay, hey Lindsay.
Hold on. Oh, okay, you're on, you went to three twenty-two, what about three twenty-one?
Three twenty-one is the two thousand fourteen squash and that was earmarked for the sidewalk project. And we do have a fund balance, um, in there of eight hundred twenty-nine thousand with the amended this year.
Wait, I'm showing eight thirty-one.
Well, um...
Isn't some of that going to Parks too?
Well, that's, that's after the twenty twenty-two request. Not in that one, the, the next one, the next, the twenty twenty squash goes, that has the Parks though. And maybe, maybe I should have done the amended and the request at the same time. But what, what I wanted, getting down to, um, the water, and I, I kind of tried to tell y'all this in the email. Enterprise funds has asset on the books, okay? So in the past, when we budgeted for capital purchases, they weren't shown on the income segment because with, with the asset. they weren't shown on the income segment because with the asset. So what I'm, what we're doing now is we are booking the expense for the capital purchase. And at the end of the year, when we do the audit, we move it to the asset because it shows a true operating cost of the fund. You get the revenues. There are things that you have to pay or you have to pay for your debt. And the capital, or the principal part of the debt was not on the budget because it's a long-term debt held. General fund does not have those things because general fund is a 12-month block of time. The enterprise funds is full accrual, so we have to show long-term debt. But to have a budget report, when we send out the budget report that shows revenues and expenses, I wanted to show those things so you could see a true operating cost. So it's going to look like water's losing money. But we're, we ended up good. And next, 2022, I did not include the principal portion in the expense for 2021. I did on 2022. 2022 is a true showing of what is going out to pay things. And we're still positive in water, which is a good thing.
How much cost do we water?
I added that depreciation because we, that's not a real expense. It's just something to take down the value of assets. So I added it back. And after you add depreciation back, depreciation back, we're at a $60,000 income this year. And next year, it's $890,000. But there are capital items.
$890,000?
Yeah, next year. But there are some capital items that I'm sure are not on there. But I had included this list of, Mayor and I went down the list of these projects. And all of these
Mayor and City Manager.
City Manager.
Mayor and City.
Mayor and City Manager. All of these are reflected in this budget in some area.
Okay, so back on water.
Yes.
At the $60,000 positive.
Yes.
Now, I know, you know, just being the fact that I stick to these little things in my brain, that we had a $10 increase on just general payments of water, which should have brought us about $700,000 above last year.
And our revenues do show that.
And our revenues do show that.
Yeah, revenues do show that.
So why does our balance not reflect that?
Because I put
Put it all forward.
There's a lot of capital expense in 505.
And will be adjusted at the end of the year.
Yes.
Plus what about $800,000 coming along, right?
Pretty much. Yeah, we, they have, we call them 54 counts. Those are your site improvements, equipment, vehicles. Those now show up on this document. So that's why you're
Why do we want that?
So we can see a true operating cost.
What's really running, what's really costing to run the place?
You're still going to have
At the end of the year, you pull that depreciation out of the fund accounting. If this is, fund accounting is a nightmare, but
If you want to know how much, if you want to know if you're truly operating at a profit, then you've got to show all of your expenses.
No, but I want income expenses.
Um, so that's the big difference in 505.
Okay, question, and I may be jumping ahead. I'm sure I am. Whenever we get to sanitation, let's have the same conversation.
Okay.
So after the adjustment, what are you expecting water to look like 2021?
There, what you will have to remember is there will be an adjustment. Then we'll run depreciation, which isn't a real cost, but it'll bring the increase in fund balance down. Right now, I can tell you what we have spent in capital purchases.
Let me focus on this line, is that right?
Huh? Yeah, that's right. And what I want you to do is if you look over this and you see something that you have a question, you see a big jump or a decrease, question me about it, and I can look into the line item and explain it better.
I hit that to Jim one time, he didn't appreciate all my questions.
Oh, I love questions because it allows me to check myself. There could be a mistake, you know? I'm not saying that it's without
She's smarter than all this than I am.
Thanks for clearing, I love Tim.
Okay, so hold on, just
State the obvious, Ryan.
Lindsay, I've talked to your head. Do you know about how much you moved in capital? There's a lot. On projects, probably.
Is that something you can go through?
No, I'm adding them up, just
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll figure with you in a second.
Don't be mistaken, as I should be.
Okay, thank you. We're just used to seeing you all the time.
Yeah.
I know Shane will
Just don't turn yourself off. Now you're making me feel guilty. No, get out of here. Late.
Okay. Okay. $558,299. That's pretty close. That's how much
It's going to go on to the bottom line.
That'll go
After the adjustment.
That'll go to the balance.
Does that answer your question? Yes, thank you.
Sorry, James, I don't know.
No, no.
Okay.
My guess would have been 556. Okay, Lindsay.
Okay, so I guess the amended for solid waste is where we are.
Yeah.
They are up a little in their revenues. But so, and their expenses are pretty much the same as what was budgeted. So the transfer from water to fund them was lower than I budgeted. So that helped a lot a little bit. And there is no budgeted transfer from water to the general fund in either 21 or 22. So looking at the budget totals page, I've got a budgeted positive of $1.296 for general fund. Did things go as I planned?
Top page, I'm
The top page.
I know the top.
It looks like, you know, the general fund, we're going to be positive instead of negative like I had thought in July, just because we've had a couple of months to look at revenue. And according to Lonnie, I can expect about the same next year as this year from his department, which is helping out a whole lot. It helps the water fund and it helps the general fund.
He's staying because he paid you to say that, didn't he?
No.
That's why I said
There's, there's evidence in the water fund with cost of construction being up, sewer receipts being up. There's a lot of positive from the development as far as revenue. But if y'all want to look at the requested now, I wish I had a better, I wish I had a Brandon's Beach prepared.
Oh, Beverly's.
Can we say requested? Where are you headed for requested?
Probably
Yeah, the far right column.
Just the column, gotcha.
And I need to give the city manager a chance to strike anything. We pretty much This is a lean budget. It's a lean budget for next year. Very few in the general fund, very few requests for capital items are in here, just the like absolutely needed things. That could change because, you know, we're at a positive 340.
Is that because we have hit the capital budget pretty hard the last two years?
Yes, and you'll see when we get to the squash budget, the 322 budget, 2020 loss, squash. A lot of vehicle and equipment purchases were made this year, last year, and will continue over into 2022 because the police vehicles, there are five that we're probably not going to get until next year. So it'll have to be paid out next year. So that helped with this year's budget with squash. And if, you know, squash trends the way that it has been, we will have enough in that fund to handle this list. I'm hoping. Good news, we did get property tax loaded. They have gone to the printer, and I'm waiting on the proof to check. They're technically in our system. No, not yet, because I have to update. As soon as
In our new software that we love.
Yes.
No.
Thank you.
How much do we love it?
We love it. Well, it has its costs, but we love it.
Getting there was
So did we get payroll fixing?
Oh, yeah, or else those people would have been here tonight.
We do, I do have a resource that reached out to me from the county as far as, we don't do tax ups here. I have a stack of 508s on my desk like that from 2021. I will be getting income. They do tax sales August, December, and February. And I'm going to be getting a list of excess funds from them, and I can apply for those excess funds to pay our local taxes. They do not collect their tax for us, but she is willing to share, you know, a list of excess funds so I can apply to get those monies sent to us to pay their outstanding tax with us.
So you target February 50 sale?
Yes, yes. Oh, actually, December. He said August, December, and February is when they do it.
Oh.
So I'm going to, first thing I'm going to do is check the August because we've been so wrapped up in software inversion that I haven't had a chance to do that. But now that I know what we've got past due from 2021, a lot of personal property, which is concerning because that's the hardest to collect. We've got about $77,000 left from last year, which is a big number. So when you look at the, and all the revenues, I budgeted 98% because you don't ever expect to get 100%.
Right.
So you'll see, when you're looking at the revenues in general fund, you'll see a big jump in personal property. That's 98% of what's outstanding. And loving this software. It gives you all kinds of reports. So those will be going out. The other, let's see, other increases in revenue for general fund next year. Local option sales taxes. I put that at 1.8, which is, I mean, up from 1.4 this year. That's a big jump. Initially budgeted for this year, but I've got it at 1.7 now. Um, let's see. Just scanning down through there. I said no transfer from water fund. Hotel motel is up a little. Municipal court fund is up a little. Liquor, liquor stuff is up a little.
Sorry.
Lindsay, I had a laugh about that.
That's all me.
Just trying to look for any like big differences. Everything's pretty consistent for the cost of our healthcare has not changed. So it's virtually the same. We're hoping that the liability insurance will be lower this year because we're not paying for prior acts. And so we should be able to see savings there as well. And workers comp, we'll have our first full year, and then we'll be audited in usually April and May, the following year. So we could get a refund on that, you know, maybe.
It's been pretty good on
Well, we went with, we went with GMA.
Yeah, but uses so far this year has been
I don't think we've had that much. I know we've had a couple, and that's a Stacy question.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry, I don't know. A lot of little things.
Yeah. Not anything major like we've had.
No, like with no shocker. There's one that's out. Did you come back? No. Uh-uh, okay. Okay. But those were from prior. Okay. There's really nothing exciting. The police, no equipment or data items. Everything's just standard operating stuff.
We got those vehicles.
Yes, those vehicles are
They're on board, they're short of the swap.
Yes. And when we get to that, I'll, I need y'all's input on making sure I've got everything like it should be. I tried to make notes down at the bottom so you could see what's included. The, I'm sorry, I put down sleep. Animal control, something I wanted to make note of in animal control. We used to have Lonnie split between animal control and the development department. Well, now that we've got Ryan, and Ryan does most of the animal control, like Lonnie said, every once in a while he'll help it. I split animal control and the building department with Ryan. So you'll see a pretty big difference in those budgets from last year to now, to next year. And that's because Ryan has been there. And then, at the same time, I put Lonnie 100% in planning with Zon. So that budget jumped up pretty good.
It did.
And that's also because we added Josh, the development utility specialist. So they grew in a position, and they grew a half a position with Lonnie because he had been split previously.
Where's Kim's position now?
She's under revenue.
Yeah, she's in finance.
Okay, what's the intent? To take the requested amount to mayor and the administrative committee for a recommendation?
Well,
I'm going to do a retreat again?
Well, this is, this is a work session. This is me ranking it to y'all, you looking at it.
You need to take it home and study.
And study it and highlight stuff that, to highlight stuff that you have a question about, and I can provide the information.
So remind me, did the administrative committee look at it before it went to a retreat?
Oh, no, I didn't.
I can tell y'all my experience, and I know everybody, everywhere does it different. Finance would work with the department heads to bring their request. And then finance people put it all together. And then city manager looks at it, and city manager goes, well, he didn't talk me about that, no. And then when the city manager goes through and has his iteration, then it gets presented to the council. And then y'all tear it apart and you
Which is the retreat.
There's a, there's a requested, there's a city manager recommended, and then that's when the when the department leaders have the opportunity to plead their case. Yes, I need this.
I thought it was a good exercise, it was the first time we'd ever done anything like that. I thought it was a good exercise to have them come for us individually and then, you know, we make some decisions really based on their ability to convince us. So that always has worked well, I forget it, so. I can't remember when that was, was that November?
What's necessary for you to meet your?
Well.
We did a retreat.
In February.
February.
Yeah, but we used to do a budget.
Oh, we did a retreat over here, chat day.
A budget retreat?
Budget retreat.
And we could have, we could have as many work sessions to go on the budget as necessary. You know, it doesn't have to be this time. We can, but we do have to have a public hearing for the public to come and make comment on what's in the budget and then we adopt.
So with the, the public hearing, I would like to ask, I think all of us are on the same page about educating the public, the buy-in from them on how their tax dollars are being used to operate their city. And so, you know, this is wonderful for us to research, read into, but the general public, they have access to this and we want them to read over it. If there's a simplified version that can explain to them on a very quick level of how their dollars are being used for their benefit, I think that would be beneficial.
And I met with every department and asked them to give me details, what does your department do? And I have all of those notes and last year I put just a generic page before each fund. So I have the notes to expand that, to give more detail so people can say, oh, the general fund, you know, it has these departments and this is what people do in each of those departments. So that was my, my goal. Even if it's, you know, on each, each department, if I put something, you know, this is the, this is the city manager and the city clerk, you know.
Something that was very successful in another municipality in multiple students is for tax amount daily, your taxes paid for, and there's the entire list of what this organization provides to our public. And that was Iowa because it's a very low cost for all the services provided. The citizens enjoyed saying that.
I can come up with some statistics, some data, better data to show a better picture. But really, the only equipment that's in here is there, there's a side-by-side and a zero-turn mower requested for parts and for public events. And a truck for grass mowing.
And the truck for what?
A utility truck, it's a thirty-five hundred, it's a little bigger than the F-150 because it's for putting like equipment in.
Lonnie, help me.
Okay, are you talking about the one that Adam was talking about?
Yes.
Okay, the service department downtown that goes out and works on the equipment, repairs the cars, the backhoe or whatever, he is forever going out to work.
Service.
And he has no tools with him and he has to come back and get what he needs. If he can get a service truck and load it down with all the parts and tools and things like that, and then when he goes out there, he can repair it while he's there unless it's something major.
How many trucks do they have?
And I'm working on getting that list together.
Spent in the frame on a cab, is that?
But actually, the one, we didn't include that one, we did include the one that Adam was asking for, which is basically the same for mowing.
For what?
For mowing.
I have not heard about that one.
So I know we did a fleet study, it's been some time, two years, and we, that's how we came to the auction, I believe. You know, we knew the overall condition, the mileage, the needs, an overall assessment. You know, I'm not familiar with this one with the fleet personally.
No, and they're working on, that's a good thing to know because we talked about getting on.
A rotation.
A rotation on by vehicles.
Yes.
So we could do that.
I have a list of all the vehicles if you need to send them.
When I sat down with, when I sat down with the departments, I made, I had them tell me what vehicles you have and who drives them home.
Well, they did, you may get mileage from them and that's what I did last time, the one you were talking about.
So, yes, I, you know, public safety really was one thing, that the mileage really helped us and we've made great strides in that area.
Oh, as far as I'm concerned, public safety is reasonable now.
You know, there's still road, but on the road crew, I have no idea what their fleet looks like.
Well, Adam told me everything he had and I haven't had the opportunity to make a decent list out of this and compare it with what's in our fixed assets. Matt today sent me, while I was working on the budget, he sent me the list in his department with, by, you know, listed by mileage and everything. So I have his list. I've got to get Adams and David's together. But David said he's got equipment sitting, nobody's using it because he needs bodies.
So that brings us to the, the next item on the agenda, of course, later.
Yeah.
And they should be good on vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, David said, David asked for a single thing except for he needs a zero-turn motor to replace something that's pretty dilapidated for mowing or trailer plans.
So does he mow or street department over there?
And his, one of his technicians mows.
They mow and also go out and do that area across from, well, usually LCI. And they mow here.
And they also mow around all the lift stations, pump stations, all the city islands that's out there to make our utilities work. They keep everything mowed and cleaned up at those stations.
And I can give y'all the bid that I sent out for the mowing contract. List everything that gets my thing.
And realize it's going to be tough to buy stuff.
Well, I mean, when I, when I started looking at zero-turn motive, mowers, I don't know. Those things can range anywhere from nine thousand to eighteen thousand dollars.
Product is hard, hard to get over right now. Mowers are trying, everything else.
Now, the mayor mentioned the ten dollar crossboard increase on payments that we implemented a year ago.
That's the minimum charge for water.
So that, when you look at five forty on solid waste permit revenue, can we go over that just briefly and discuss where we are, what the cost is, what the output is? It's the last three pages next to that, so just go all the way to the very end. The last page is missed before, it's the two right before that.
I'm definitely not new for this. I didn't, I didn't bring as much information. I know that we're down to three individuals in that department. We used to have four, so it did hit the bottom line to not replace the one, but.
So what was your question?
So on that, and this was an area of interest, a few years back, we discussed making sure that as we have the funding, you have enterprise funds, that service should be considered enterprise fund and we want to go in the correct direction. Are we making strides towards that? Have we made a positive movement to make sure that that service being provided is not just a burden on the taxpayers?
Who's service on garbage?
Garbage. I spent a lot of time talking with Rachel when I was talking with the departments on, you know, explaining, having them explain to me everything that they do. And I know that garbage for Rachel is a problem because she needs a GI.
GI.
GIS map of the route. And there's, you know, she said people would call in and complain about their garbage not being picked up and she'd look them up, well, you're not even in the city. So there's room for improvement there. I know that people are, you know, walking up to, it just, there's no limit to the amount of garbage that can be picked up.
Correct, yep.
And we have to pay tipping fees for that stuff.
Which committee does this fall under?
Oh, which I do.
I looked at, I looked at. I looked at the cost of a ninety-five gallon container and, you know, maybe we spend a couple, you know, spend some money on that and say, if it fits in there, we'll pick it up. If you have one of those, we'll pick it up. If, you know, that would kind of identify who has, who's paying the trash.
Yeah, because even at that time, we were picking up couches and chairs and, I mean.
I think, I mean, I guess it would be straits, I don't know, but we ultimately, I think, need a little bit more of a just a casual work session to talk about the strategy of where we want to go. It was quite uproar when we tried to just to take a look at it and we just wanted to take a look at it. And we tried to have a town hall that was declared a public hearing and.
Well, the only reason I mentioned it.
It was good information and we reacted to it.
Yeah, my, my question revolves around, are we as a body providing that department with the tools and resources necessary for them to be as efficient as possible? That's my question, because the new truck, the new dump truck, the new truck with the bed in it, I want to make sure as a council, we are providing that department, those employees, because I'll be honest, they are very popular employees. That service, our citizens really love it. It's a wonderful service. I just want to make sure we're giving them.
All sixty-five of them are.
I want to make sure we're giving them.
Hundred and something.
So you're talking about the GIS.
Like a hundred and something, I think.
You know, through the new technology, is there an area where we can provide something for them?
Yes, and I even reached out to an old colleague that is a GIS technician and asked her if she did stuff, you know, on the side and she said that, she told me I could check with the Northwest Regional Commission and I think they're the ones that did, did you tell me that? They're the ones that did the, or was it E1?
The mapping?
The mapping for the.
Yeah, I, we've got a contact over there that can design the mount and set sweep down, plotter and scanner and everything, they can just send it to us in a PDF, we can print it off.
Well, that's, I do want to do that for sanitation to get the route, you know, plot it and get it to the drivers and make sure that they're, you know, doing the route like they're just doing.
We need to take, we need to.
Well, I need to stop going back and picking up garbage.
We need to take a look at those trucks. Okay, the new truck isn't working well.
Yes.
But at one point, maybe eight days and co, little trucks were down.
Also stimulated some activity a couple of years ago.
And then we only had, the new one running, then we had to bring up a big dumpster in to, to facilitate that, so.
So that was why I asked, I want to make sure we're.
I think at the retreat, we need to try to look at, you know, how many that day, how it is, never lose one or three.
Trucks, kind of look at overall again and look at making some adjustments.
But we need to make sure.
Yes, and was it you, Lindsay, that said that that new truck away, you know, they've got the little, the pickup.
The parking.
Yeah, the one parking. That is working out. You know, maybe not replace one of the big ones to get another one of those.
I think that this morning when they're picking up a truck.
They took the gaps for a minute.
Okay.
So did I answer your question?
Yeah. Next on. So where are we going on this before we get off of it? You'll set up a, what do you want to do next?
Well, I, I wanted to bring this to y'all, okay? I wanted to give you what was requested, let you look at, I mean, because there's some, there's some things on here, I took some things out that were requested because there had not been any communication other than was just me. And I felt like people needed to talk to their committees before it came to me.
People need to talk to the city manager first and then we'll talk further.
And they didn't, so those, those items did not get.
That's how that's not, that's not for me personally, but for the next person that's going to be in that position, we need to preserve the forms that we have, preserve the procedures that we have. And people need to understand that. So if they don't, we need to remind them of that.
So there were, there was, there's a few things that didn't make it because the communication was not there. So it may be an opportunity for?
That can be brought up at a retreat.
Okay.
And that's where we would have the department heads come in and then if they want to bring something up, you know, we're all sitting out there together. Now, the question becomes, do we want to put off that retreat until after we might or might not get a new city manager in?
No.
I'd say no.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to be any more quick enough. She's got names.
I don't think we'll have to. I think we'll center around the budget process. Like, can you remember, Lindsay, you remember when it was last year or uniform last?
I don't recall, I don't recall that last year.
You were four less.
I wasn't involved.
Couple of years. If we're in the public.
Oh, yeah, that's why.
Yeah, that is.
No, we had, we had a, we had a retreat that was public, but it was, it was like in the fall of nineteen.
Yeah, we had our tables set up in a square.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, so that was for the budget.
That was budget.
How quickly do you need us to have a meeting with department heads and get together and go through that?
And then we went to, our spring thing was on Zoom, sorry, go ahead.
We just, the law requires for me to have a public hearing and then a meeting for us to adopt.
So would we need a work session first?
We could have another work session.
And then another public hearing after?
I have, I have already advertised a public hearing for Monday.
This Monday?
Yeah, but we could.
For what?
For the budget. So today is the work session, Monday's the public hearing, and then December sixth is the adoption day, but that can be changed.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not ready to adopt a budget by any stretch of the imagination. That will give everybody time to, too many moving parts.
Right.
Okay, so let's go with some other plan.
Okay.
Okay, so do you have a calendar with you?
Does anybody remember when that hearing, I mean, the retreat was?
The only two I remember is January and.
Was that?
All day, Zimmy?
The only retreat that I've been in was in February or in late January, it was January twenty-eighth. Okay, so December, oh, and another thing I've already told.
This I P only keeps thirty days of stuff.
I did hear from Michelle at GMA yesterday about the change of minimum age to fifty-two and she checked with the actuary and it would cost us less to change the plan than it would to pay him to do a study to see how much the plan would be changed, the funding.
And that was also what Brandon said.
But he, he's the one that told me, he reached out to them just to be sure and I did get it from her and they, she will have the documents available to us December seventeenth.
Okay.
And she's, I told her.
Now, that may require us to have a call meeting. We may have to have a call meeting for that, okay. But we had to have this done and that was the time constraint on the handbook.
Okay, Syken responded to my questions and he did say that the handbook would need to be posted for two weeks.
Two weeks, so we need to have that, that call meeting before the end of the, before the middle of December.
Yeah, he said that it would have to be December, the December meeting before we can bring the handbook up because we would need to, the plan was, once we got it back from him, we were going to get buy-in from the department heads, you know, just for them to look at and make sure that we got it correct. And then it would be brought before council and council would make the decision, we want to go with this, but we've got to, before we can pass it, it has to be posted for two weeks.
Okay. When does the budget need to be finalized?
We need, we need to adopt the budget before January because that's when our.
We've got time there before January, right? And we need to have this done. So once, our earliest appointment after Monday's meeting would be.
We need to do a budget last year.
Okay, so that would be, um.
So this is gonna be retreat first.
That was a retreat, I guess.
And then we'll do a, a budget meeting.
So, okay, this Thanksgiving, the last Thursday in November, um, that's not a holiday, is it? So we could possibly do a retreat then?
The last Thursday of November, did you say?
That, that's not a holiday, because the twenty-fifth.
Last year we had.
Twenty-fifth, actually.
Three budget meetings in October.
So our retreat was in February last year, so we were working off of, oh, in twenty-twenty, we were working off of a new budget, but I guess we.
But we had budget meetings, but we had three in October last year, and then went November.
But no retreat type thing.
No. Let's see, were those, budget or were those, um?
That was our first retreat, within February twenty-twenty.
Yeah. Right before.
February twenty.
Okay, so last year.
Our retreat on Zoom was last year in January twenty-eight.
Yes.
That wasn't a budget, budget had to be done before that?
Yeah, here's the, here's the schedule from last year, I marked it up to get this year.
Who is this in one retreat this time?
All, all those hearings we had last year in October were about the tax increase.
Yeah.
And then the first, it said possible work session date if needed was ten twenty-nine, and then, uh, November second was regular council meeting, and that's the public hearing for budget, and then, um, adoption in December. So I think a lot of the budget stuff was discussed in the tax meetings, because you had to increase the tax, and we were talking about, you know, define this, we had to develop the budget to, um, you know, make the, the point to increase the, the military.
Well, I think we can make this, it's just, uh, we're gonna have to put some meetings out there, those dates are reasonable, we just got to get the retreat together, Steve, uh.
Well, that's not the third word.
No, 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 we gotta do a budget retreat.
Budget retreat, where you, you sit, you sit down.
Well, we, we did do that before.
No, we didn't.
Okay, if you want to.
But we're going to.
I, I thought that's what I heard you say.
Or, you know, retreat work session, it could be, um, where we have, you know, them come in and make their plea for what they are asking for.
Okay, so what, what are we doing?
Well, I've advertised that Monday's a public hearing, so I would need to post that, that it's, if we're not gonna do that, we're gonna, um.
We can't, we gotta approve the budget before we.
Well, we've gotta work through the budget, we've gotta.
Public hearing to present the budget.
Yeah, we, we have to work through, you know.
Present it here before we.
Before we have a public hearing.
So that's what the purpose of the retreat that Sunny was talking about, okay? So if we did that like on November the eighth as an example, that's a Monday night.
Yeah.
You know, I'll miss Monday night football, and we'll go on, so is that a potential? Is that a potential?
That is a potential.
And then following that date, then when would we have to have?
We could, we could, we could hold our public hearing on December sixth, that's the first meeting, because we're gonna need to have a call meeting, um, what you and I talked about earlier, and Michelle was saying we needed to, in order to, to change the, uh, the plan, the current plan.
We've gotta have that done two weeks before, so that would require a call meeting, so if we do the November the eighth.
Work session or, uh, retreat?
We call it a work session.
Won't be here, but looks like it, we'll need to do it, do it.
What would work better for you?
Maybe the fifteenth?
Well, that would still work.
That would work.
That does not work for me.
Well, let's see, let's try a different night.
I agree.
You'll be gone.
We're probably gonna leave on, um, Friday to, whatever that is, next Friday. We'll come back the following Sunday or Monday, I guess.
So the fourteenth.
Probably Sunday, or maybe Saturday.
And what about you, Greg?
I'd zoom there.
So, can, can we zoom on this?
I don't see why not.
I'm more comfortable with the eighth and, and Sunny zooming in.
What'd you do, open to that, Sunny?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm worried about time.
If we zoomed me in or one of us, that doesn't mean we have to zoom the public, but I, it's still.
Yes, it does.
I don't think so.
It's a, it's a work session, but is that not open?
Can, can we?
I don't think, I don't think.
Can we turn on the monitor?
I don't think we have to make the public, give them the ability to zoom in if one can.
We'll be.
If you're gonna zoom me in, we'll throw you up on the monitor.
Totally agree.
Okay.
So let's do that November the eighth, and let Sunny zoom. And, uh, and then the next will be December the, uh.
Y'all gonna be able to do it, cause I got a meeting on the eighth.
We'll get, we'll get.
We'll get Karen.
Okay, Karen might have to help with that, okay.
We'll get Karen to help.
What made you do that?
Yeah, so planning is supposed to be really long. So there we go, on the eighth.
Counting.
Why can't y'all do it on Tuesday night? No, nobody move anything on Tuesday night.
Um, Ms. Beverly, when we look at the dates, so the eighth for the work session, does that work on that? And then that is the work session for us to give with department heads?
Yes, that will need to be.
Over that, the public hearing that will be held.
December the, uh, we could do December the sixth on the public hearing, since we already have that in this, the classic public hearing for the first public.
Okay, so the only, and, hear me out, the only reason I have an issue with that is we're asking the public to come to this meeting on the sixth to talk to us about a budget, that then we turn around and approve. So there's no way for us to take the input from the citizens, process it, and prioritize if there does need to be an adjustment?
No, we present, we have to present a final budget and give them approval time, I think we have to, don't we?
Yeah, I, I think what we're presenting is a final budget, uh, and, yeah, we can get input from them, uh, but, uh, as we're making changes after a public hearing, um, it, it doesn't happen.
Last year, we had a public hearing on, uh, the November meeting, and then we did, we adopted the following month. So what we could do.
So that's what I'm familiar with.
Yes, what we could do is have the public hearing, we could have our retreat on the eighth, um, we could have a public hearing on the sixth, and then come back after the seventeenth to approve the budget and approve the changes of the.
Your, your two week period that you have to.
Okay.
That might be some other things back on all of that.
That's a lot of meetings.
Well, well, that was my question was for us on the sixth, or I'm sorry, the eighth.
Sixth.
That work session on the eighth makes sense, you know, how quickly can we get a public hearing done? And, and I do understand the point that the majority of the public will not be present, we may not have a person show up, but if someone does show up to consider their input and suggestions, and if there are any amendments we wanna make, we can do that before the sixth.
And the, the budget amendments will happen all year, just like we've done this year.
So Beverly, will you give me those dates again?
November the eighth, December the sixth, and we haven't settled the last one yet.
Yeah, the last one, I, I had told, I, I had told Michelle.
Yes.
Yeah, six is the name. I, I mentioned to Michelle yesterday that I would approach you all about, um, meeting on the twentieth to approve the, um, plan changes, and that would be a, a good time to also approve the budget.
Would that be two weeks?
That would be two weeks.
Two weeks from the sixth?
Yes.
December, yeah.
So November the eighth, December the sixth, and December the twentieth, and that'll be a call.
That'll be going on the twentieth.
And that's, she's, what, the final approval?
Yeah. That'll be the budget.
Money before president.
I, I do wanna mention that the, um, the budget request as it is, we're doing it. Um, some things that we can talk about in the administration committee as far as, uh, vacation leave, those buyout numbers are included.
Okay. Question on, you were talking about personal property earlier, in five days past due, do you have any way of debt collection on fines fees to the city that are owed?
We do not, but I have reached out to a couple of places for, um, some pricing, and I do have a contact when we get ready to turn things over, um, they collect, and the things come out of what they charge the people that they're collecting from.
Do we have an idea of what that number estimate would be?
We have a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of past due property taxes.
Oh, probably seventy-seven.
That's personal property, real property is also seventy-seven.
Has there been any kind of analysis on those properties to see? If there's one in the middle or a handful of them, I'm not asking you to tell me who they are, unless that's been looked at.
Um, that's what I'm, I'm going to do to, to compare to the list that, when, when the county sends their letter of notice that their property's gonna be sold, they send a copy to us, if it's in the city, so we know that those properties won't ever sell.
We need to consider that for water, past due water.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, court fines and water is included in that?
Um, court fines, um, Tanya probably handles those, because I think they're a little more strict on not paying your fine.
Yeah, still wash the water.
Yeah, so, um, but the water, at one time, we did have a collection agency that would go after people that, uh, that filed their accounts and make.
And that's what I was thinking about when I was telling you about the, the collections. Um, we, we do, you know, we send the nasty letters, and I do have, you know, contacts, because, uh, I was starting, it's not that hard. We can do that here if y'all want to. I think you probably don't have to do it once, because that's what happened there.
It gets people's attention. Absolutely.
All right, you go publish your dates to us?
Yes.
So I better go.
So I guess, since I put an ad in the paper, I'll have to change that.
Well, you know, you've already placed an ad in the paper, I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are, right? You have a public hearing in the last two seconds, and you say, hey, does anyone have suggestions on our budget? If there's a citizen here who has suggestion, take the suggestion out, close the public hearing. I think you've already advertised for it, I say do it.
And I could put an ad in the paper next week to say, you know, we're not gonna have a public hearing on the sixth.
Yeah, I, I just don't see us being prepared.
Correct.
If, if somebody did show up and have questions, I'm not, I don't think we're at that, that point.
Okay.
I'm easy enough to have a meeting, which is published.
I'll get the dates together.
And can we start this process earlier next year?
I would like to.
Cause I think we normally.
Normally.
I mean, and I know we've all had a lot of stuff, and y'all were doing this transition, but I think we start it.
September?
Yeah.
She, she got the dates there.
One thing, one thing, and, uh, so when we hired Beverly, and I'm sitting at this table there with her, and I, and I asked her a question, it was a really simple question, because we knew that we were gonna be changing our, our, uh, computer programs over. And so, you know, I'm coming from business, I thought we could do that in, oh, yeah, ninety days. And, uh, so my question to her was, how long could you do it if you accelerated? And money was not an issue, blah, 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 and you could get all the technical if you needed, and she said two years. Two years is an astounding length of time. Now, mind you, we're still not done, but I have to give credit to these two that are in the room and others that are not, for the work that they have done to get us to the point that we're at. We're not there yet, but we're close, and they're happy with it, and they are very happy.
It's only been a little over a year.
Right.
Not even a year, it was December.
We have one year, or two year periods, so for where we're at, we have to commend them.
Awesome.
And, and thank them for what they have done, you know, so I know, I know we took them a break because we didn't get budget done when we thought we should.
Well, and, and that's why I'm saying next year.
Next year.
That's why I'm saying next year.
Hundred percent, but the, the digest really drives the process, and we know now that.
Did she come out of time?
Well, yeah, there are people up there that are, um, wanting to meet deadlines, and, uh, so we can start.
Makes, makes a difference when they do it, too.
So we will have that process started earlier next year.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying, cause I know y'all had your hands, hands full.
Totally, yeah.
You know, I'm just saying, huge reference, let's try the shoot for earlier.
So try the shoot for not finding another system that you have.
Right, have another two year version.
So, uh, the amendment of pay scale that's on here.
Yes.
That might be something better discussed at a retreat.
It would be probably.
Tonight, than tonight, so I'll ask the, I'd ask you to table that if you're willing tonight, and then we need to let admin committee have discussions about that, that they can bring to us on the retreat, okay?
We need a motion on that. Comment?
I didn't attend a motion that we tabled this, it's gonna be our retreat.
So move.
In a second, please.
And assign it to, uh, administration.
Assign that to administration to report back to, uh, council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anything further?
Sorry, I just called just more work.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, question, last one for the night, from me.
Let's hear it.
Lowest paid city employee.
That, that needs to be discussed, and, uh, executives.
Will that be handled with this?
Yes, I can, I can provide a list of how much everybody makes.
Perfect, thank you.
But we, when we, when we approved these job descriptions, we didn't.
We did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
So my question, to clarify, was not for names or information, it was just a, a number.
Well, the lowest rate, the lowest range is thirteen.
Okay, that's what, and that's why I was looking at this, and I was thinking to myself, yeah, sorry, I need to clarify that for you.
When we updated the, uh, salaries of everybody?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so at this point, unless anyone else has any other questions, I didn't attend a motion to adjourn.
So move.
In a second, please.
All in favor?
All right.